The Plan and Zoning Commission is generally an advisory body to the City Council. The City Council will hold a public hearing and make the final decision on all matters before the Commission, other than site plans and subdivision plots unless denials or conditional approvals thereof are appealed. Please contact the City Clerk or Development Services Department staff for details on council hearings. Applicants will be given 10 minutes to present their requests. Proponents and then opponents from the public are then allowed to speak in that order with each speaker allowed a maximum of five minutes. The applicant is then allowed five minutes for a rebuttal. The hearing will then be closed and the Commission will discuss and vote on the issue. All comments are to be germane to the item under consideration and speakers are to maintain a courteous manner. Items listed on the consent portion of the agenda will not be individually discussed and will be considered for approval in accordance with the recommendation in the staff report unless an individual present or member of the Commission requests that the item be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately under the public hearing agenda. The City of Des Moines is pleased to provide accommodations to individuals or groups with disabilities and encourages participation in city government. Assisted listening devices are available for meetings in the MSC boardroom. To better serve you, when possible, please notify us at least three business days in advance at (515) 283-4209 should special accommodations be required. Plan and zoning commission meetings are broadcast live on MediaCom Government Access Channel 7 or 777 for customers with that local cable service or online through the YouTube application at the following Internet link: www.youtube.com/CityOfDesMoinesIowa. And roll call, please. We won't leave it now? Okay. Is there a motion for approval of the minutes of our last meeting?
I move to approve the minutes of the last meeting.
Thank you, Will. Okay. Will raise hands. And are there any abstentions? Thank you. And sorry, as we adjust to our first in-person meeting in many months. Okay. I'll read the consent portion of the agenda. The first item is a request from Hubble Realty Company for review and approval of a major preliminary plat amendment to Woods-on-the-River Plat 11 for property in the vicinity of Riverwoods Road and River Ridge Avenue to allow the subdivision of existing platted outlots for a total of 22 single-family residential lots. Is there anyone here who would like to have that item pulled from the consent agenda and discussed this evening? Anyone on the Commission? Yes, sir?
Let me see if I can talk with this. Welcome to the meeting. Glad you're here. If you have some questions, we'll go ahead and pull it off the consent agenda and do a presentation on it. Are you opposed to the item?
Maybe you could come forward so we could hear you. So if you wanted that item discussed, if there was something you disagreed with it, then we would take it from the consent and discuss it this evening.
That's what I'd like to do. If there's some questions I have on more extensive that I don't understand and I just think that it should be brought up and discussed.
Okay. So that item will be pulled from consent?
Thank you.
Thank you. The second item on consent is a request from 400 Grand, 5 Grand, for review and approval of a preliminary plat oak crest for 1.2 acres of property located at 4005 Grand Avenue and 520 40th Street to be divided into 14 lots for a six-unit household living row building type and a two-unit household living row building. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to have this item pulled from the consent agenda and discussed this evening? If not, is there anyone on the Commission who would like to hear this item? We'll leave item two on the consent. Item number three is city-initiated zoning text amendment to Chapter 134 of the municipal code to provide for the allowance of outdoor storage as accessory, the principal use of self-service storage within the I-1 and I-2 industrial districts. Is there anyone in the audience who would like this item pulled from consent and discussed this evening? Anyone on the Commission? Okay, this item will remain. Item number four is a city-initiated request for vacation of a segment of 16th Street from High Street South to the East-West Alley. The adjoining properties are 555 17th Street and 1540 High Street owned by Medical and Professional Properties. Is there anyone who wishes to have this item off the consent and discussed this evening? Anyone on the Commission? Okay, item number four will remain on consent. Item number five is a request from Gary Randa for review and approval of a site plan for a Type 2 design alternative for property at 3029 Walcott Avenue to allow a 38-foot tall deck to be constructed within two feet of the north interior side property line, which is five feet less than the minimum seven-foot yard for a house Type B. Is there anyone in the audience who would like this item pulled from the consent? Okay, so we'll pull number five. And we do have item number nine on the agenda, which has staff approval and agreement of the applicant. I'll read that item. Request from Wong Mi Long Incorporated by Ling Wong for review and approval of a public hearing site plan, 2611 Ingersoll Avenue, site remodel for a Type 2 design alternative for property at 2611 Ingersoll Avenue to allow conversion of office space for restaurant use triggering site compliance. Is there anyone in the audience who would like this to be heard this evening? You want it to be discussed this evening?
Yeah, I just have a few questions.
Okay, we'll leave this on then? Okay. So then we now have on consent items two, three, four. Is there a motion to approve this consent agenda?
I'll move. I'll move consent.
Thank you. And then we'll vote on it. All those in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. So now we'll start our public hearing portion of the meeting and start with item number...
Do you have a continuation?
Oh, I'm sorry, we did. I'm sorry, I know. Item number six, right?
Yes. Chair members of the Board, Jason Van Essen and the planning staff. Item six, the applicant has requested a continuance to the next meeting. In evaluating their project further, they've realized that they need to seek rezoning to I-1 of the entire site, so we're supportive of that. We'll get out a new notice and they'll be on the next agenda. But we do need a motion to continue.
I'll move.
Okay. All in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. Okay, thank you. Okay. Now we're ready for the public hearing. Thank you. So item number one has been pulled from consent, so we'll start with that item. This is a request from Hubble Realty Company for review and approval of a major preliminary plat amendment to Woods-on-River Plat 11 in the vicinity of Riverwoods Road and River Ridge Avenue.
Madam Chair, members of the Commission, Bert Drost, planning staff for the City of Des Moines. It's good to see everybody here. There's a lot of new faces since we last met, so it's nice to see everybody. Item number one, I apologize for this, is a plat in the Riverwoods PUD. Many of you may remember earlier this year, the Riverwoods PUD was amended to allow for redevelopment of a final phase within the Riverwoods subdivision. Here's an overall map that shows where the additional 22 lots would be located. The two streets here that currently are stubbed would be extended into this area to provide the additional lots. Here are some photos that show how the streets are currently stubbed. Along the southerly one, there is a trail that would be retained. Then here is the plat that they're proposing. It does comply with the recently approved PUD conceptual plan, so the Commission's charged with reviewing this plat against that conceptual plan that was recently approved, and it does meet all of those requirements, so staff has recommended approval. We did recommend that there be some modifications, or I should say notes added to this plat just to really memorialize all of the conditions contained in the conceptual plan. So staff has recommended approval, just subject to a few conditions, and I'll read through those quickly. Number one is compliance with all administrative review comments. Two is compliance with all requirements of the Riverwoods PUD conceptual plan as amended by City Council on June 21st. And then provision of the following notes on the preliminary plat. And these notes are technically required by the PUD, but we just wanted to, I guess, reinforce that these houses that are going to be built there have to follow these conditions just to show that they will be quality homes. Were there any questions for me? We did not receive any comment cards back.
If the Commission has no questions, we'll hear from the applicant. Yeah, the applicant.
Good evening, everyone. Doug Saltzgaver, Engineering Resource Group, 2413 Grand Avenue. Also here tonight is Eric Bonham Camp from Hubble Realty Company. If I can't answer a question, I'm sure he can. We're in agreement with staff recommendation. I'm here to answer any questions you may have and any questions the parent neighbor may have for us.
No questions from the Commission? Thank you, Doug. And are there any other members of the audience who wish to speak in support of this request? At this time then, speakers that are in opposition, come to the microphones, state your name and address, and you will have five minutes.
As the speaker comes forward, we do have a sign-in sheet just to help with the public record. Just want to point that out. And this will be for all the items tonight, so just look for that.
Good evening. I'm Walter Anderson. I live at 2605 Bentridge Court, which is in the proximity of where the addition is being made. I have three questions. In the map that I looked at yesterday with the layout, it shows that there's going to be a retention pond for overflow coming from the sewer, not the sewer system, but the storm drain system. And who's going to own that? Is that going to be a Hubble that owns that and has the liability for it? Or does that become part of the HOA? And then it gets spread over all of us because all part of an HOA in that subdivision? So that was one of the questions. And then adjacent to that, farther out into that corner was another area that looked like it was going to make another shallow pond, but I didn't see any reason for it or what, maybe I just didn't understand the print either. Could it be that I just didn't misread it? And then I had one other comment was that on adjoining property, the first lots, new lots off the adjoining property are much smaller than the existing lots. And it should probably be considered, if they're going to narrow them down, which I can see why they want to, but there should be something that narrows it down, not just blank. I got 11,000 square foot lot, and next to me is a 7,000 square foot lot. It just looks like you're just really compressing the heck out of it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else present who wishes to speak in opposition to the request? Or anyone that has a neutral position on this item? Okay, at this time, Commissioners, do you have any questions for city staff? Oh, yeah. Okay.
Yeah, and I can try to answer some of his questions, and when I leave out, Doug Saltzgaver can fill in after me. But the PUD does require them to have a minimum lot width of 60 feet. If you remember, that was a point of discussion during the review. Originally, their plan showed 50 feet, but they ended up increasing that to 60 feet, so all of the new lots will be at least 60 feet wide. I believe some of them are even wider than 60 feet. As far as the storm basins go, they are proposing two, one in this general area here and then a smaller one down here. Those would have to be owned by a horizontal regime. As part of the plat, they'll have to do the homeowners association that'll be responsible for maintaining that, so I believe if...
Can I ask also if you have a statement?
Yes. I guess everybody's six feet away, so thank you. The stormwater basins would have to be placed in, I guess we called a horizontal property regime, that will be owned by a homeowners association. So the 22 lots would in common be responsible for owning and maintaining those two stormwater That would also fall on the homeowners association of these 22 lots.
I didn't see anything for potential. You're building something that's 40 feet wide and 80 feet wide.
Sir, unfortunately, you had your time for comments, so we can't entertain any additional at this time.
So Commissioners, any further questions for Bert? Okay, the applicant has...oh, go ahead.
Can I ask a question about fencing? Is there any way to clarify the fencing questions?
I wasn't sure if he was meaning silt fencing. That would be required during grading and construction, but as far as fencing goes, that was a requirement of the PUD that they have fence. I can see if...I apologize, I'm too tall for this. Yeah, I'm not seeing it on here, but I do know that the PUD does have requirements for fencing. Jason, do you remember during our discussions with them?
Yeah. We looked at, I mean, this is just fencing standards for an individual homeowner that comes along and installs a fence, so I think we ended up landing on having just the traditional standards of the city code apply. We didn't have anything particularly unique for the neighborhood. I know we discussed that with the applicant and ended up landing there.
Is this working? There we go. I think there might be a little bit of, if I'm understanding the questions right, I think there might be a little confusion about the stormwater runoff areas and whether or not that's going to be a standing water pond or if that's generally a dry area that is used to absorb stormwater runoff.
And I'll have to defer to Doug Saltzgaver on that, but my understanding is it would be a dry, or it would just catch it during the rainy event and then it would drain or
Any other questions? If not, the applicant has five minutes for rebuttal.
Doug Saltzgaver, Engineering Resource Group, again. There is only one stormwater detention basin, not two. It is a dry bottom basin, so 99% of the time it is going to be dry. When it does have water in it, it will drain out probably within majority of it four to six hours. Only very large storms is there going to be any significant depth in the basin. So, and also, yes, the homeowners association will own and maintain it, and the association is going to be including those lots that were developed in Plat 10 about two years ago. So it'll be, and Plat 10 also has two detention basins, and so there's a lot more homes for that responsibility to be spread over. I'll answer any questions you may have.
Okay. If there are no questions from the Commissioners? Okay, go ahead.
I'm sorry for being slow. I think, is it a horizontal ownership structure of only the 22 lots? Or is it the HOA will own it all, so costs will go into the current houses as well for that new basin? Or is it costs will be contained within those new 22 lots? Because I thought I heard two things. I'm sorry.
It'll be Plat 10 and Plat 11. There were nine other plats done before Hubble Realty purchased the property. Those are all contained in a separate homeowners association, and what Hubble has developed comprises two plats, so these two plats will take over ownership of the stormwater basins on these two plats and be responsible for them. So if someone lives in Plats 1 through 9, they will not be assessed for any improvements, maintenance on these basins. Hopefully that answers your question.
Yeah, I think so. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? If not, we'll close the public hearing at this time, and Commissioners, we have time
I'll move staff.
Okay, there's a motion to move staff? Any other discussion on the item? If not, we will take a vote. If I show hands, excuse me. All in favor of staff, please raise your right hand. Okay, thank you. Now we're on to item number...
Number five.
Five, aren't we? So this is a request from Gary Randa for review and approval of a site plan for Type 2 design alternative for property at 3029 Walcott Avenue. And Kyle is city staff presenting.
Good evening, Madam Chair and members of the Commission. Kyle Larson, member of city planning staff, presenting item number five here. The request comes from Gary Randa, 3029 Walcott Avenue, public hearing site plan for a Type 2 design alternative to allow 38-inch tall deck to be built within two feet of the north side property line. Here's an aerial photo map of the subject property at the corner of Walcott Avenue and Southwest 31st Street. Some photos of the site visit I conducted last week. You can see the existing deck coming off of the house. The applicant is requesting to extend the deck into that area where you see that vegetation. The deck would extend all the way to that wood privacy fence, which is approximately five feet. And then there would be an additional two feet to the property line on the other side of the fence. Here's another photo just looking the opposite way. And then a couple of street photos to give you some context of the neighborhood surrounding the subject site. And then here's the site plan provided by the applicant. It's a little tough to see, so I have a closer diagram here. You can see, if you follow my cursor here, where I have my cursor is the deck extension off the existing deck to the north. And then, like I said, there would be a two-foot setback to the property line, which is on the other side of that wood fence that you saw in the photo. Staff is recommending approval of the applicant's application to grant the two-foot setback to the north. We did not receive any comment cards, but we did have this pulled off the consent agenda with a neighbor that would like to speak on the item. There are a few photos provided by the applicant. Tyler, could you switch to the document camera? These are just a few photos of the existing deck from the property owner. This item actually came in as an enforcement action, so the deck was previously built without a permit. You can see it there with the table sitting on top of it. The applicant has since removed the decking and come back and applied for the permit and applied for the Type 2 design alternative through the public hearing site plan tonight. Some additional photos provided by the applicant of their property. You want to switch back to the presentation, Tyler? That concludes my presentation.
Is the applicant here to...oh, go ahead.
I have a couple of quick questions for staff over here. So if this would have been a patio on the ground, there'd be no issue, right?
Correct. There'd be no building.
Do you know the intent of, because it's up 18 inches, that it has to be set back?
A deck is considered an accessory structure, so there's a five-foot required setback.
So it's treated like an outbuilding is treated like that?
Correct. Any other questions?
I guess for clarification, the photo you showed where the deck was all the way to the wooden fence, that's what they're asking approval for?
Correct. Yep. Would you like me to put that photo back up?
Yeah, that'd be good.
So this is what the applicant is proposing to do.
Okay. Thank you.
Is the fence on the property line?
The fence is not on the property line. There's actually an additional two feet behind the fence to the property line.
So they're just requesting that that's the only, the two feet behind the fence would be the exception?
That's correct. Any other questions?
Thank you. Is the applicant present to present? Please come and state your name and address. Please come and state your name and address and sign in.
My name is Gary Randa, and my address is 3029 Walcott Avenue. Good morning. And I wanted to, after an accident where a tree fell on some plants that we had in that hole where the new deck would go, we decided to add on to it. And my fault that I didn't get a permit, I should have known, but I didn't. And when my son got through, it was beautiful, and we loved it. Anyway, we took it back down and made an application for that. I also took a... Could you help me with that? This is the same picture, but it has everybody's address or everybody's, Kyle's and John's phone number to ask them for their permission. No, to ask their permission to, if they would request approval for what we're trying to do. I've visited every house up and down Southwest 31st Street, the neighbors across from John and Lisa, on the west side, about seven houses, on the north side, seven houses, went down further south from my house on Walcott, on both sides of the street. And even approached the new neighbor that just moved in behind me that can look into our deck. Neither, then nobody had any problem with it. If you were to ask Kyle and John, he had a lot of people that called and requesting approval. There's no one else here but the John and Lisa to oppose it, but we'd certainly appreciate your approval this evening. Any questions I can help?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition to the request? You have five minutes, and please come and state your name and address and sign in on the sheet there.
My name is Lisa Hamilton, and my address is 3425 Southwest 31st. Thank you for allowing me to address the commission tonight. I grew up on Southwest 31st. My parents built the house that I live in now in 1961, and it's right next door to Mr. Randa's house, and you can see it up here on the top of that picture. And I truly enjoy living on the southwest side because of the distance between the houses, the mature trees, the privacy it allows us, and easy access to downtown. Those are the reasons I bought the house for my father in 2006, and also because I love the house that I built. Now to the point, I live next door to Mr. Randa, and he and his wife Connie are lovely people. However, this request for a variance to expand their deck, I oppose. As you know, setback requirements should not result in adverse impact on other property, and I'm going to give you multiple examples of negative impacts of this deck extension have on our property. So you can see on this photo, the unique position of his house, which is way back in the northeast corner of the lot, so any expansion that he does on the back directly encroaches our property. And over the years, he's gotten closer and closer to the property line. You can see the... There's several additions that he could make over the years to this property. This is a high-traffic area for my family because those are the stairs that lead from our deck down to the backyard. And if he has an increased deck space, it's more space for people to gather, less privacy, more noise on our side. To hide all the activities and buildings that he's done, he built the tall fence, the ten-foot tall fence near the property line. So if the deck was extended all the way up to that, it'd be like being in a hotel room where the walls are too thin and you can hear everything. The proposed deck faces directly the side of our house where we have two bedrooms. You can see this is our roof line right here, where we have two bedrooms, three bathrooms, and multiple windows. And already, we feel like our privacy is invaded and can't open our windows or open our curtains fully. Oh, sure, sorry. So our guests often combat on the intrusive look of the fence and how it's difficult to hide, so we try to landscape around it the best we can. And you might think it's okay, he thinks it's okay to extend the depth of the fence, but the Randas are not going to live in that house forever. And when he sells the house, the next owners are under no obligation to keep that privacy fence. They could tear it down, and then their deck would be only two feet from our property line, looking directly into our house and directly onto our deck. Here's other photos of houses in the neighborhood that have similar configurations to Mr. Randa on the corner with the front door on one side, the driveway on the other, but they maintain the required distance between the different properties. So Mr. Randa's here asking for a variance because he already built the extension and had to tear it down like he showed. And he didn't talk to us, he didn't get a permit. He was sided with two violations from city inspectors, one for building without a permit and not obtaining the needed variance, and another for not building according to code. So we had to tear the deck down, and he was forced to come here and apply for a variance. And he has a history of ignoring city ordinances, not obtaining permits, asking forgiveness after he's constructed something and requesting relief from code requirements. Years ago, he requested a variance to put on that addition on the back of his house. He showed a plan to my parents that didn't have windows on the north side, and my parents didn't oppose the variance. So you can see when he built it, there are windows on the north side. I need somebody to flip my pages for me, don't I? Well, we'll just skip that photo and go on. He also has a fence on the west side of his lot, lot? I don't know what I do with my photos. On the west side of his lot, that he built with large brick pullers and horse statues, and he built it on city property. So he had to retroactively get the city to agree that he could purchase that property, otherwise he would have had to tear it down and rebuild it. A few years ago, he put a shed on the corner of his deck for his cats, air-conditioned shed, and didn't get a permit, and he built it right against the fence, so he had to come back. And city inspectors may had to move the fence and also had to get a permit retroactively. So as stated in conclusion, as stated in the city code, chapter 135, exceptions can be granted if strict compliance is impractical or undesirable, and if the exception doesn't result in any adverse impact on other property. So we know Mr. Randa can comply with the current building regulations because he's doing so right now. I've demonstrated multiple adverse impacts on our property, increased people traffic, more noise, less privacy, and most importantly, a potential decrease in my current property value and its future resale value by having a structure so close. My husband, he is here, he's not going to repeat what I said, but he fully agrees with everything and supports what I've said. Setback requirements exist to protect our privacy and our property, and there are no reasons why Mr. Randa cannot comply with the setback regulations. He's doing so now. So I respectfully ask the commission to deny this request. Thank you, and I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience who wishes to speak?
Yeah.
Against the request? If not, then anybody else who's neutral to the request that wishes to speak? And do we have any further questions for city staff at this time? Then the applicant, you have five minutes for rebuttal or to answer any questions that came up.
I don't see it very well. Anyway, you can see the roof of their home next to us. In order for her to see what's going on in our deck, she'd have to be on top of the roof. And I have to commend her, she knows a lot about our property, and she's right. Our fence was built 25 years ago. The builder that built the fence had a permit to do it and got permission from the city. One of the cities said, Gary, just need it over to you and just write me a check for $125, which I did. But I don't think this is going to hurt her property, her view, or anything. And we got a beautiful home, and my wife and I enjoy it, and I know we're older people, but we hope to be around a little bit longer and enjoy it. So with that, I say thank you very much, and if you have any questions, please, please ask me.
I do have one. Just because there's a dispute of facts, did you talk to the neighbors or not? Because you said you talked to all of them.
I'm sorry.
Oh, I was just addressing the dispute of facts. So she says you did not talk to her, but you said you talked to all the neighbors.
I did. I talked to all the neighbors and went around and asked them what their feelings were. Everybody on the other side of the street, which would be on the west side of Southwest 31st Street, I went down eight houses, gave, left everyone a picture with the phone number to help me get this thing passed. And they were all very nice and very receptive. I went on the other side of the street next to John and Lisa, talked to the neighbors there on the corner lot. They said, Gary, we have no problem with that. And I don't think anybody would. I mean, I can't see where this revision or this four foot that we're adding on is going to hurt any... Oh, I'm sorry, this four feet. But you can see the address there, or the phone number, and I went down to a new neighbor's house that just bought, who's adjacent to them and adjacent to mine, and he says, Gary, this looks nice compared to what it looks like now after that tree blew down and just wiped out all the beautiful flowers that we had. And we had to come up with something that would look nice. We plan on putting pots with trees and stuff on it, and my wife and I go out there and sit in the morning, maybe have coffee or maybe a cocktail or glass of wine in the afternoon. And I can't see where this is going to bother anybody, but as you can see by her report, she knows a lot about our property. So I'm sorry that we're, we'd like to get along with them, these folks, but I appreciate your consideration. Thank you. Anything else?
Did you, go ahead.
So did you talk to her?
No. I knew her feelings about it, and she had already filed a complaint. And so that's when I decided I better go call on some other neighbors and see how they feel. So I went up and down the street. I went up and down the street on both sides behind this. I called on 20 people and left a copy of this, and no one filed a complaint. In fact, they all called, and John, I forgot John's last name, and Kyle, and he got phone calls and support. Everybody I talked to had support. And they're the only ones that don't, that didn't support it. But again, I can't see where I'm going to intrude on their neighbors or they have to... You can just see the roof of their house. Their house is much lower than mine, so they can't, they can't possibly see what's going on the deck, but they do, and I'd like to get along with them better, but I hope to in the future. But no, I didn't talk to Lisa about it. We just did it, and we shouldn't have, and I found that out. We tore it back down, put it like it was, and then took some pictures to present to you folks on planning and zoning.
Well...
And the staff, and I was grateful that they gave us a recommendation, and I hope you'll adhere to that, and thank you very much.
We have another question?
Madam Chair, I have a question of staff. During one of the presentations, the objection was raised, or the discussion was raised about the existing fence. And the point was made that if this fence decays or a new owner, for one reason or another, removes the fence, my question to staff is, what would happen?
Is, well, is that a question from a, the building code perspective, that we wouldn't have railing? Or, I guess I need more detail to understand. So they, if the fence is not there, they would be required to put a railing across there because that is their railing? So if that's the concern, that would be the solution to that?
I have a similar concern. So maybe getting to what Will is addressing, they'd still, it's not like they would be obligated to pull it back. If we approve this, it's approved forever. Even if someone new buys it and tears down the fence, it's not like they have to build a new one, they just have to put up the railing, and then there's still only two feet. Right?
Yeah, I mean, if the element, if the deck is destroyed, the relief would go away. So, but I understand what you're saying. You know, there could be repairs that extend the life of it, the fence could be removed, and circumstance could change. And so, I mean, I understand what you're getting at, and I don't know that I have like a perfect answer for the question.
I have a question for staff. As a part of the staff recommendation and the board recommendation, a deck has to be built to meet building codes, correct? And that can be a stipulation of our approval of this if the board approves it?
Yeah, absolutely. The commission can apply different conditions. It's understood they have to build it to building code. And so, I mean, part of, part of the reason they had to tear it out in advance is because I don't think they could demonstrate that what they had initially did complied. And so they have had correspondence with our permit staff to kind of sort out that part of it, but...
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions for staff? If not, we'll close the public hearing, and commissioners, we have time to debate.
Chair, I'm not going to support this for several reasons. One, a constant pattern of violation of policy. I know policies are guidelines, but they're exist for a reason, and anytime we have exception, I think Lisa pointed out that if it does infringe on someone's property, I think she's probably the neighbor that's most affected versus the ones that he went up and down the street. So I am not going to support it for several reasons. Thank you.
I'm in agreement with you, Jan.
Can I ask a quick clarification? Can I ask a clarification to Greg's point earlier? So I mean, if this was just a ground patio that happened to be 38 inches tall, there's nothing that could be done here, right? I mean, the fact is, they're trying to attach it to the fence. The fence is now a structural element, so we have a patio. Is that right? But I understand your comment?
I'll let Glenn answer, but it has to do with the height of the deck, but...
Yeah, so we actually, in our most recent overall amendment to the code, addressed this issue, and we ended up changing the definition of yard and adding a definition in article 13512 to address this. And so, no, there, any obstruction on the ground that would go all the way into the setback as this would, or even a patio would, would no longer be allowed under the code. A patio even under, you know, 36 inches, for example, it may not need building code, railings, and so forth, but it would still have to comply with setbacks or else get relief from this commission.
Really? So you're saying a concrete patio is considered an accessory structure?
For example, in the case, the concrete pavement, which would be...
Yeah, pavement. Okay, so... And if they chose to build a concrete pad, they could go another two feet, right? They go all the way to the property line?
They would have to meet, you know, requirements for amount of paving allowed and impervious service and surface and so forth. Jason may have...
Why, I'm thinking, this is unrelated, just everybody understands, the new mics, this is new, everybody's new, and this, you know... this is new, everybody's new, and this, you know, you just poke it on, leave it on, and then you poke it off.
Thanks.
I was hoping you wouldn't take that personally, but...
Any other discussion, or is someone at this time wish to make a motion?
Well, I'll move staff, and then we can vote. Correct?
I don't think you want to move staff, though.
Okay. I mean, I don't want to support it. I was, I thought you had to be positive, and then...
Oh, right. We can't just move to deny it.
Okay, deny, okay.
Yes, you can move to deny the type-two design alternative. I would move, I would include approval of their public hearing site plan. I know it's a little bit confusing, but the way we consider a type-two design alternative is through the public hearing site plan process.
Okay.
So we don't want to do anything to mess up any permit request or anything, but I would just move denial of the type-two...
Okay.
...approval of the site.
That's what I'll move. Thank you.
Okay. There's a motion been made. Any further discussion? If not, will all those in favor, please raise your right hand. And those opposed?
What, was that eight on the affirmative? Okay, I had seven, but... Okay.
The motion to deny is passed. We're now ready for item...
Great.
Item number seven, which is a request from Marco Viscara for review and approval of public hearing site plan for type-two design alternative for property 3523 Walcott... Aren't we just did, yeah. Avenue. Seven. Excuse me. Yes. For property 3523 Walcott Avenue to allow a total of 1,372.5 square feet of impervious service within the front yard area, which is 89% more than the maximum 725 square feet for a house type A.
Good evening, Madam Chair and members of the commission. Kyle Larson, member of City Planning Staff, here to present item number seven from the applicant Marco Viscara, who's the homeowner at 3523 Walcott Avenue, seeking a type-two design alternative to allow a total of 1,372.5 square feet or 47% of impervious surface in the front yard area, which is 89% more than the maximum allowed 725 square feet or 25% front yard impervious area for a house type A. The map of the subject property on the north side of Walcott Avenue, south side of Des Site photos that I took last week of the subject property. You can see the pre-existing driveway in the center, kind of the darker shaded concrete. I believe the dimension of that previous existing driveway was 16 feet 4 inches wide, which met up with the curb cut that you see or drive approach into the street. The lighter colored concrete is the concrete that was added, which is in excess of the impervious allowed area. Here's another photograph of the site. You can see the third stall kind of wraps around the side of the home. And then a couple of photos to give you some context of the neighborhood that this is Here's a site plan provided by the applicant, and you can see some of the calculations that were done to figure out the impervious surface area, which again is 47% of the front yard. Here's another site sketch. The area in red is what staff is recommending as the condition of the approval to remove this area. You can see, I'm going to toggle back up to the site photos. Bear with me a second. One concern that staff has is the public sidewalk here, because it is driven upon, traversed by vehicles, that public sidewalk is a minimum of six inches thick, if not thicker, to hold the weight of a vehicle. The sidewalk outside of the drive approach is only four inches thick. So one of our concerns with this is that with this taper coming back and not meeting up with the drive approach, that this four-inch-thick sidewalk will be driven upon, and it'll create a trip hazard in the future if that's continued to allow to be in place. This area on the right side of the driveway leading up to the front door is considered a walkway, so we're not as concerned with vehicles driving over that as we are on the left side of the driveway here. So that brings me back to this sketch, which you can see staff, the condition of approval staff is recommending that that hatched area in red be removed by the property owner. That equates to about 66 square feet. As I mentioned, staff is recommending approval with that condition. We did not receive any comment cards back from neighbors. However, we did receive an email last evening from the property owner directly to the west opposing the additional paving and referencing some basement flooding issues that have happened in the past at her property. Staff feels that that incident may be separate from any paving or any improvements that may happen on this property, because that property actually sits higher on the hill than this property. So we feel that the stormwater is more than likely going to be going downhill from her property and from the subject property. So that comment came from the homeowner to the left here, which you can see there is an elevation change as you're going up the hill to her property. That's the only comment that I'm aware that we received regarding this application. And that concludes my presentation. Are there any questions?
If not, thank you. Go ahead.
I'm sorry, can I ask one? If he had proposed to actually replace a piece of sidewalk with six-inch-thick sidewalk, how would you have looked at that?
I think that would be something that we would have to consider. Another issue, though, is how that would relate to the drive approach. I guess I'm not familiar enough with the code in terms of having the drive approach match the driveway. But we hadn't considered having that, I guess, square of sidewalk replaced with thicker, thicker concrete.
If I could add, I think the reality is, is if it's left as is, not only are you going to see the sidewalk break up and that, for that square, but you're also going to see vehicles drive over the corner of the right of way that's right now grass. So that, by default, you know, that's going to be kind of a dead zone in the right of way, and possibly a spot where makeshift pavement or gravel is thrown down to try to compensate for that and just kind of an ongoing maintenance issue. So if that had been posed to us, I think we'd still make the same recommendation, that it come down, meet up with the drive approach. You know, if they were looking at doing a wider drive approach where this all kind of naturally flowed, then that'd be a different story.
Are there any other questions?
Thank you, Dan. The applicant here to present, please come forward, state your name and address, and sign in.
I, we added the parking pad, not knowing that the new ordinance was, even with my contractor, was, just came into effect maybe a year or two ago, about the 25%. And so it was my fault for not researching that. To answer your question earlier, we did talk to, my contractor, we met with a city inspector, and they looked over the house, and he said, if we were allowed to keep the new addition, what we would need to do is exactly change that one piece and increase the approach to make sure that that piece of concrete wouldn't get run over and crack. And that's, and he said he would approve that permit if, again, if I applied for it, if we were allowed to keep that piece. Pretty much, there's three drivers in my house, and in a couple of years, it'll be a fourth. I'm trying to avoid parking on the street. And again, I didn't want to make the neighborhood look ugly. I didn't want to park on the street. I intentionally didn't take out the trees, so we went around them, and that's why the grade, or excuse me, the taper is weird as it is, just to make room for the automobile to go around the tree. But again, I can, I can request a permit, and it's my fault. Again, it's my fault for not researching it. My contractor, again, wasn't even aware of that as well. But it was, I guess it was a 2019, later 2019 rule that passed, and he wasn't even aware of it. That's it.
Well...
Mr. Viscara, are you in agreement with the staff recommendation today?
If need be, yes. I'll do that.
Thank you.
Any other questions? If not, thank you. Do we have any speakers that oppose the request this evening? Okay, and anybody who is neutral to the position? Okay. Do we have any other additional questions for city staff at this time? If not, we'll close the public hearing. And commissioners, what's your pleasure at this time?
Chair, I'll move staff.
Okay, thank you, Jan. Any discussion on the motion to approve staff? Now, we'll have a vote. All those in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. Okay, unanimous vote. Thank you. We're now ready for item number eight, which is a request from Hartford Avenue Storage for review and approval of a public hearing site plan for a type-two design alternative for property at 1929 Southeast 14th Court to allow development of a workshop warehouse building type in an I-1 industrial district for office and warehouse use. And Bert's going to present.
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the commission, Bert Ross, planning staff for the city of Des Moines. Item number eight is a request for a site plan at the property at 1929 Southeast 14th Court. As you'll see shortly, it's really along Hartford Avenue more than Southeast 14th Court, but they are requesting five different type-two design alternatives that I'll be going through here shortly. Here is the aerial map of the site. It's a C shape. You can see that it's on the north side of Hartford Avenue in between Southeast 14th Court and Southeast 15th Street. The site is comprised of multiple parcels. However, I'll point out that the site plan before you tonight is really here at the southwest corner of the site. So that's really where we'll be focusing our discussion. The next slide gives you some context of the site. It's the area outlined in blue. Again, Hartford Avenue goes along here, if you can follow my cursor. It goes from Southeast 14th Street, just a block to the west. And Hartford is a heavily, it's an important street in the city because many visitors coming to the city are here to go to either the county soccer complex or the county baseball complex. So we do feel that this is a pretty high-visibility street in our city. And I'll also point out that there is a recreation trail here along the southern bank of the Des Moines River that provides some pedestrian and cycling access to those soccer and baseball complexes. The next slide shows the, is taken from Google Street View of Hartford Avenue. You can see that in front of the site, they've, the city has recently planted a number of trees. And then you can also start to see the subject property where they're in the site plan I'm about to show you, there'll be a stormwater detention basin right along Hartford. This is looking north down Southeast 14th Court. Again, the site is located here where there's the for sale sign. And then this is looking north on Southeast 15th Court. So you can see it is in an industrial portion of our city. The site plan, as I mentioned, really is just encompasses the southwest corner of the site. You can see they're proposing a warehouse-type building that would be accessed by a driveway off Southeast 14th Court, and they're proposing a stormwater basin here along the southern site boundary. Again, they are requesting five design alternatives. The first is waiver of the sidewalks along the public streets, that being Southeast 14th Court, Hartford Avenue, and also over here on East 15th Street. They're also asking for waiver of a landscaping fence buffer, and it's for a very small area right here. So spoil alert, staff has recommended approval of that appeal. The next appeal is for transparency requirements. The building that they've proposed does not, this is the south facade facing Hartford Avenue, it does not meet our transparency requirements. There's no windows on that facade. And their, the next design alternative they're requesting is for building materials. 60% of the primary facade needs to be sided with the allowable building material, and they're not meeting that requirement. And then the fifth design alternative they're requesting is for burial of overhead utilities, and they have not provided with us, provided us with any cost estimates. So staff has recommended denial of that one. So I briefly touched on some of the aspects of the staff report. First, I'll just say we have recommended approval of the public hearing site plan subject to the following conditions. One, removal of all references to future plans on the site. You may have noticed that it's a pretty large parcel. They're only proposing to develop the southwest corner. The site plan had noted some future phases, which they need to remove those future phases until they're ready to develop those phases. And then, two, they need to comply with all administrative review comments. So I think it'd be easier to start with the type-two design alternatives that we do not support, and that would be waiver of the sidewalk along Hartford Avenue. We are supportive of waiving the sidewalks along Southeast 14th Court and Southeast 15th Street. However, we feel that Hartford Avenue is different. As I showed you, the sports complexes are located to the east, so it's good to, it's in the city's opinion that we should be piecemealing that sidewalk along Hartford where we can. So eventually, we have a sidewalk connection from Southeast 14th to those complexes. We've also recommended denial of the major facade materials. The requirement is that 60% of that southern facade be sided with an approved major material. They're proposing only 22%. We do believe that they should side at least 20, I'm sorry, at least 60% of that southern facade and the wraparound at the corners with a allowable material. And then we've also recommended denial of waiving the undergrounding of utilities, since they hadn't provided us with any, with any estimates. So that leaves me, what we are recommending approval of, we've recommended approval of that landscape buffer along that west side property line. We've recommended waiver of the sidewalks along Southeast 14th Court and Southeast 15th Street. We've recommended waiver of the transparency requirements along Southeast 14th Court. And we've recommended an alternative, design alternative to allow them to reduce the major materials along Hartford, I'm sorry, along Southeast 14th Street. So it's not, they don't have to provide the 20-foot wraparound on that facade. And then we've also recommended that the transparency requirement... And then we've also recommended that the transparency requirement be reduced. We weren't supportive of the full waiver, but we have recommended that they have windows on the upper portions of that facade. So I know that's kind of confusing, but are there any questions for me?
I'm sorry for being new and having a thousand questions.
Sure.
The transparency requirement, is it a requirement that has to be windows or has to be an appearance of transparency? Would a mirror work?
No, it has to, I forget the translucence factor, but it has to allow some light to pass through.
All right. The sidewalk going in, is there any impact on the trees that are actually just been planted and is there any impact on the retention area that's identified?
Yeah, I'll pull up the site plan.
Bert, while Bert's doing that, I do want it to say that in the staff report, we noted that our traffic and transportation division was willing to consider and actually presented some alternative sidewalk kind of designs, one being more of a paved shoulder. They're willing to work with the applicant on that. I think you're probably thinking back to that picture with the trees, they're kind of set back. And so the thought was that it could be, that sidewalk could be constructed in front where you have some flat land and it could be kind of an alternative, at least get you out of the travel path if you're a pedestrian.
Are there any other sidewalks over there right now?
I don't believe so.
I don't believe so. There's definitely not any on Hartford. And I know on Southeast 14th, there are some segments, but they're kind of sporadic.
And to walk along that road to get all the way to county, how many more people would have to either buy property or how much would the city have to put in to actually connect that sidewalk all the way down there?
That's a fair question. I could see the sidewalk being put in, maybe it's more likely that it would be done as part of a future East Hartford Avenue reconstruction project. I could see that happening.
And I, I go back to the, the concept of the alternative design of basically just kind of an asphalt, like a paved surface, it's similar to the street surface that's on the shoulder, that'd be a, I'm not saying that that's in any plan right now, but that's something I think is achievable in the near term. Traditional sidewalk with this rural cross-section isn't, is, we debated on what to recommend here. And once we spoke with our traffic and transportation division about that concept, we were of the opinion that, you know, that they should do their part. I know it's a long process to get these areas phased in over time, but that, that was where we landed because of that. Certainly, we would not be asking for a traditional sidewalk in a rural cross-section with, you know, circumstance otherwise.
Any other questions for staff? If not, thank you. And is the applicant here to present this evening?
Good evening, I'm Daniel Wilrick with Peltz Design Services, 2323 Dixon Street in Des Moines. And I'm here with John and Matt Karamanlis, the property owners. And I guess we want to address the recommendation of staff. Obviously, we're pleased at the recommendation to accept waiver items A, B, C, and B in the staff report. In terms of item E, the reduction of transparency, I think we would ask that we still consider waiving that completely because with the use of this building, Mr. Karamanlis is going to be storing equipment for his company in there. So there's some expensive things and equipment and items and just, we feel like the transparency, the windows provide a security issue potentially. Glass is a really easy entry point. I mean, I think the recommendation that putting it at 10 feet or above certainly helps, but it is still the easy point to get into the building, you know, if somebody had some desire to steal some things out of this facility, so. And then talking about the items that staff is recommending denial of, item A, the waiver of the sidewalk along Hartford, got a picture, you've already seen this, but if we can show it again, you can see the...
Can you switch document camera? Thank you.
Where are we at? I guess, really, where do you put a sidewalk? I know, Jason, you suggested the shoulder, paved shoulder. You know, to me, that's, I'd be a little uncomfortable walking down that shoulder, especially during state soccer tournament time. But Bert also pointed out the bike trail that runs north of the property here gets us a connection down to county. And again, if we did some sort of a sidewalk here, really, if we're just talking about this southwest corner of the whole property that they own, you'd get a half a block of sidewalk, right? So it's really a sidewalk from nowhere to nowhere, which is the argument I know everybody makes, but it's valid here, especially because there is nothing to 14th Street and nothing all the way down to the complex. So I think really, we just questioned, one, the shoulder sidewalk, is that really safe here? And two, if that's not where you put it, where do you put it on the site that really isn't a place to put it? So we would ask for the waiver along Hartford as well for the sidewalk. Item B, in terms of the reduction of the major facade material, I know there's not a lot of building in this area, but directly to the west of us across 14th Court, there is a building that doesn't have the 60 percent durable material on the facade, it's a four-foot or low, or they're about winged scot. And then if you go across these 15th Court, same thing, another building over there that only has a short winged scot around it. So that's why we would, you know, sort of trying to match what is there, would ask that that waiver be granted along the Hartford side of our project as well. And then finally, item C, the waiver of the underground utilities, I guess we'd like to potentially leave that one open. We're still waiting for Mid-American Energy to give us a cost to put that underground. And as you can see, that, part of that discussion is if we can present a cost, that maybe there's opportunity to waive that, but since we don't have that cost yet, I guess we'd like to potentially leave that item open for discussion once that does end up in our hands, so. Yeah, I think that's really what we have for you guys tonight, our request. I don't know if you guys want to say anything, or if you've got questions for any of us, we're happy to answer.
Any questions from the commission?
Abby? Yeah, just because I'm not sure if I heard you right or not, were you amenable to the possibility of putting in transparent windows at a 10-foot height?
Well, I think obviously just because of that security perspective, we'd, we'd rather not, but I think, you know, if that means the project's, it's got to happen to make the project go forward and that's just a decision that they'll have to make as if that's, they'll move forward with that provision or not.
Any other questions? Not, thank you. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak in opposition to this request? No? Do we have anybody who's neutral to the request, would like to speak? And commissioners, do you have any questions for staff at this time? I guess my question is, since they're waiting for Mid-American for a quote, could we act on all other waivers tonight and then leave that or no? See, okay.
No, this, as we've advised many times, if there's an outstanding question, then the entire item needs to be continued.
Yeah.
Greg?
If and when we get to a motion, you can always tie C to approval of the, sorry, Jason, Planning and Urban Design Administrator. You can always do that.
I think that would be tough in terms of undergrounding utilities because it requires a type-two design alternative and the code is structured that that can only be approved by the Plan and Zoning Commission. So I'm, I'm not confident that that can be assigned back to the Planning and Urban Design Administrator. And that is different than the old code, but that's the way it's structured now.
Oh. Can the waiver be requested here again at a different time?
They would have to file a new application and pay a new, new site plan application fee.
Yeah, it'd be another public hearing, so it'd be another $200 application fee plus the notification fee. My recommendation would be just continue the item, because it's just hard for us to act, I mean, hard for the commission to act without information. And it's hard for staff to make a recommendation one way or the other.
Chair? I would move to continue, that's what I was thinking.
But, oh, I don't know, is the, is applicant okay with that or?
Did you understand, Bert? Yeah, I believe he said he would just pay to bury the utilities? Okay, so do the undergrounding, so they would be okay with the denial of that?
Okay. Can you show, I'm struggling with the sidewalk.
Tyler, can you switch?
Can you show the sidewalk again? Well, actually, can you show the photo that, like, shows where the trail is?
Oh, yeah.
And where the road is? Like that, yeah. Yeah, that one.
Trails behind it, on the river.
I don't like the idea of having a sidewalk that goes, I mean, I understand that we don't want to approve that all the time because then no one's ever going to have a sidewalk, but it doesn't make a lot of sense here since there is the trail, but I don't, how far is that from there to the trail? From Hartford Ave?
I would guess it's about a quarter mile.
Yeah. I'm just trying to think of how you still have pedestrian walkways, but not be wasteful on some, because if it's me, I'm not going to, I'm going to take the trail because it's safer clearly.
Just a, oh, I'm sorry.
I would like to underline what Emily was saying. I think if there's, we were talking about some kind of asphalt, okay? I think that's a misapprehension for a driver, you know, to see a shoulder with a, with some asphalt for just a little bit stretch of a road. I think that's asking for confusion on the part of motorists.
Abby?
Yeah, I'm just thinking topographically, I kept looking at that side, the north side of Hartford, but what is the topography of the south side of Hartford Avenue?
It also slopes down.
It also slopes, okay, thank you.
Yeah, that's where the old, the old drive-in theater was.
Okay.
Chair? Yeah? Yeah, I was thinking the very same thing, that I wouldn't walk on that. So if it doesn't look like a sidewalk, anyway.
Okay. Any further questions for staff? If not, we'll close the public hearing and discuss further.
So there's a lot of pieces here, Madam Chair. If I could, I would propose a motion, at least to stimulate a conversation. My motion would be to agree with staff on A through E, to waive A through E, E being a, not a full waiver, but a reduction, and D, a reduction. With the last three, A through C, where staff recommended denial, my motion would be to deny C, agree with staff on C, but to waive A and B.
Bert, could you scroll the screen just so everybody understands? Thank you.
Basically, I'm agreeing with staff on everything except for that A and B on the screen. I'm proposing to waive those.
If not, we'll take a vote on the motion before us. If you agree with the motion, please raise your right hand. Okay, thank you. We are now ready for item number...
Nine.
Nine. Which is a request from Wong Mi Long Incorporated for review and approval of a public hearing site plan at 2611 Ingersoll Avenue, site remodel for a type-two design alternative for property at 2611 Ingersoll Avenue to allow conversion of office space for restaurant use triggering site compliance.
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the commission, Bert Ross, planning staff for the City of Des Moines. The item before you is a site plan that's requesting two type-two design alternatives. Staff has recommended approval of both, but there is a member in the audience tonight who has questions, so I'll go through the presentation here quickly. So the subject property is located at 2611 Ingersoll Avenue on the north side of Ingersoll, kind of in a big block between 24th Street and 28th Street. It contains several businesses, most notably that's Supari. They have an existing parking lot that's located behind the building, so kind of fronts Linden Street here to the north. As part of the site plan, they're asking for waiver of screening of all of the rooftop mechanical equipment and then also waiver of the burial of utilities along the rear of the property. So they're not asking for it along Ingersoll, just along the rear property line. So here are some photos of the site. You can see the building right here on the north side of Ingersoll. Ingersoll is being reconstructed in this area, as you may, may be able to tell. This is looking back east at the building. This is looking at the building from behind. And the applicant has provided an engineer's statement stating that the building was built with concrete masonry unit blocks, so it wouldn't be able to carry the weight of the screening materials needed to screen the new rooftop mechanical equipment. And that is why staff has recommended approval. And then in this photo here, you can see the utilities that are along Linden Street. The, they've submitted a estimate from Mid-American that shows it would cost $40,000 to bury these utilities. Their overall project cost is $100,000, so that utility burial would represent a 40 percent overrun of costs, so staff has also recommended approval of that design alternative. Here's another photo that shows the rear of the building. Then this is looking down Linden Street at those overhead utilities along the north rear property line. Here's the picture of this, or the, not the picture, the actual site plan that shows the building along Ingersoll as well as the existing parking lot to the north that would be improved with part of this site improvement. And here are some photos that they've submitted that kind of shows sightlines for the overhead utilities. Zoom in on that. So like I mentioned, it is a public hearing site plan, they've requested those two type-two design alternatives and staff has recommended approval. We did not receive any comment cards or any public comment back. So are there any questions for me?
Okay. I'm smiling in here, sorry. So you identified that a 40 percent cost overrun was calculated as unreasonable. What's the limit of reasonable?
I don't know that we have a...
Yeah, I mean, we don't have an exact, it's, everything is, you know, is a judgment. I think the couple of things that we took into account is that this is the, the backside, you know, the Ingersoll primary street side where we are more focused on the underground utilities, has been taken care of with the streetscape project. The other thing that took into play with this property is that, for both of the items, is that there's actually multiple tenant bays and all of them but one is occupied. And so doing either one of these projects is going to impact existing businesses because they would have to move their services while also operating. And if they were to do reinforcement for the screening, then they would have to open up the ceiling and some of the tenant spaces. And so as staff, we took that into account along with understanding the... spaces, and so as staff, we took that into account, along with understanding the, the character of the area or our goal, you know, what's that character of the Linden Street behind? And then also incorporated cost as it relates to the overall, and that's the basis for our recommendation, we do not have like an exact hard number of, you know, this is the point where something moves from unreasonable to reasonable, it's a judgment call.
I would like to add to that, some parameters that are used by staff when they make this decision include primary corridor, which Jason referenced, project, overall project cost, and then cost of the property.
Any further questions for staff?
I'm curious with the burial items, where we're burying just a spot and then it's still staying up, is there a reason that we push for that versus something where we say, hey, once we have like X number in a longer run, that we start to push for that or that we hold that open, is there a reason?
Sure, Chair, our site plan ordinance, or chapter 135 actually says that all utilities have to be buried wherever practicable, so anytime we have a site plan, it's kind of like the same concept with sidewalks, we try to get a piecemeal, you're right, that we are creating a lot of situations where overhead utilities that goes underground for a property, then it comes back up again, which does look odd, but the idea is over time, as properties improve and redevelop, that we will eventually get there, so it's just kind of a piecemeal process, we get it when we can.
I guess I'm more saying that it's also far more expensive, isn't it? If we do one and up and down, as opposed to saying, we're going to, you know, hey, you're here, you have to bury it at some point, you have to bury it once eight of your neighbors are together, I mean, is that...
The hard thing is, we have a point in time where we can enforce something, and, you know, we've contemplated with sidewalks, Glenn, what's the term I'm looking for, like these, you know, agreements which have expired after a certain point in time, and what happens if the property sells, so it's not, that's a question that we've danced, you know, danced with a lot over five plus years or more, but there isn't a good way to hold somebody accountable five, 10 years, don't you think, your neighbor's doing it? So, our window of opportunity is really at the point in time we're reviewing the application.
Any other questions? If not, is the applicant ready to present, you have five minutes? The applicant? Yeah, and come forward to state your name and address, and sign the sheet, please.
My name is Rich Ayers, Ayers Design Group, 6768 West, uh, Harding Street in Unola. Excuse me, I did the same thing, yeah. Rich Ayers, 6876 Harding Street in Unola, Iowa. I'm the architect for the project. The two exceptions that we're asking for is the primary electric, which, when this project, or when Ingersoll Avenue was being renovated, they brought new power along Linden Street, all the way from 28th to the car wash. And that's all new, and then it is backfed to the existing building. If we were to come in with Mid-American Energy and bring it down, come over three poles, and come back up to a pole for the car wash, which has two transformers on it, et cetera, and the Mid-American cost of $40,000 is just putting in for three poles. The cost for, for my client is $109,000, somewhere along that line, to bring it underground from the new spot there to a new transformer on the ground, then to the building. That $109,000 does not include adding a transformer pad, that would be another $10,000 to add that transformer pad. Then there is additional cost to rework the electrical system inside the building per Mid-American's requirements. The second exception we're asking for is screening of the units. This is an existing building that has nine-inch C-shaped structure that cannot take the weight of the snow load put on by the screen. This was verified by Tompkins Engineering, and provided that we would have to come back in and add additional steel on each tenant all the way along the entire thing, so we would have to completely disrupt each existing tenant, tear out their finishes, and then replace it. I can't even put a cost on that, that's just huge. And I can't put a screen up, the building would collapse. Other than that, we're meeting all other staff comments and completely redoing the parking lot per the current code.
Any questions from commission? If not, thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have any members of the audience who wish to speak against the request? Okay, come forward, you'll have five minutes, state your name and address.
My name is John Franklin, I live at 2617 Linden Street. I don't have a problem with the power lines being above ground there, it's right outside my bedroom window, it's not, not far, you know, it's not a big deal to me. And then the screening, the air conditioner units, and stuff like that up there, I mean, they can get kind of loud, especially in July and August when they're running, I don't really have a problem with that. Only problem I really have, well, I mean, I got little, little issues that aren't a big deal really, but... If you look in the corner of the parking lot, which would be right, right here, that's where the traffic is going to come in and pull down through here, right there, this is gravel for about 75 feet here, and my house is right here. Right now, the car wash pulls through there, and, you know, there's about 10 or 15 cars that pull through there, and it tracks mud up and down the street, and then a few days later, it's dry, and then the cars are pulling through, and then it just kicks up these dust clouds. If I leave my car parked there with the windows down, you can see dust on the dash, if I have my windows open, I get dust drip coming into my house. My only concern with this is that the amount of traffic that is going to be coming through there is going to be pretty good, there's a pizza place there, they, you know, they could do 100 runs, you know, pizza runs on a Saturday, Friday, Friday or whatever, so that's, that's 100 times that they're pulling through there, plus the traffic from the bar and all the different businesses there pulling through there, so we're going from 12 cars, 15 cars, to 115 cars. I just, I don't want to stop the Wong's from being able to improve their property, it will be nice, it looks nice, it'll be nice for my house. I've always had a good relationship with the Wong family, I've lived at my house for 26 years, 27 years now, but I just, I have great concerns about the dust. There was a sewer project there three years ago, and they put a whoring machine in front of my house, and they were there for quite a while, pouring 1,000 feet this way, 500 feet that way, and the dust from that was just crazy, they're doing the Ingersoll improvements, the dust from that is great, but all that is temporary, but this could be long-term, possibly, I talked to somebody from the city, and they said that they won't be able to do anything about it for years, for at least a few years, but, yeah, I just, I don't know, my concern is the dust. Like, I, you know, I'm going to have people that are intoxicated pulling through there, maybe branding my car, it's on the street, I've watched it happen numerous times on my street, that's just living by a bar, you know, but I don't, it's not that big a deal to me, I drive older cars, but, yeah, just the dust, if I'm sitting on my front porch, I don't want that dust, I don't want to be breathing in that dust, I do construction, and I'm around dust all day at work, and it's just, it's, I don't know, it'd be disheartening when I'm sitting on my front porch and I get dust at home, too, but I don't want to stop the project, you know, I know that these got renters that are going to want to come in here, and things are going to want to get going before winter and stuff like that, but, yeah, I just don't like the dust that's going to be created, and if the Wong's can come up with a solution to that, to maybe pave that, it's about 60, 75 feet there that he's paving, there is a car wash there, they have a gravel parking lot, and it's illegally connected to Linden Street, and I've informed enforcement about it, and they're going to be talking to the car wash people about that.
John, your five minutes are up, if you want to, if you could just conclude it here shortly, yeah?
Oh, okay, maybe the Wong's can, the car wash people can put some money in on that, but, two months prior, I did own the street in front of my house, and that's, so, I mean, two months ago, I could have said no to them pulling through there, the city took my property without permission, but I guess that's a moot point, but I'll conclude here, I do not want to impede him from getting done what he needs to get done, but I just, I don't want the dust. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak in opposition to the request? Okay, any other questions for staff at this point?
I'd like to ask a question, Madam Chair, Bert, the, the property owners explained his problem to us, we're looking at a site plan for this application, talk about dust and what we have in terms of our capability to address that, would you?
Yeah, so since this is a public hearing site plan, the commission would, is entitled to put conditions on that, whether that's required dust control for that 75 feet, or maybe even full paving. Turn the overhead. I don't know if Jason has anything to add?
Yeah, if...
New driveway.
I do want to, just a couple of things, one, I don't believe we had any comments from, from engineering, otherwise we would have included those as a condition, but I do think it's within the commission's purview, if there's concern about the vehicle movement, it is set up for a one-way, a one-way pattern, so, you know, folks are going to be exiting out, and there is that short segment of gravel, I mean, if we, I think of when Smokey Row came through up in Sherman Hill, there's 19th Place, which looks a little bit more like an alley than a street, but we had them as part of their project pave that, because we knew we'd get a lot of vehicles from their, their development, so I think there's precedent and logic if the commission wanted to go down that path.
I have a question for Jason. So, is there precedent for streets? I agree, I've seen alleys and property owners be required to address alleys, but I've never heard or thought of...
Well, usually with the street, it'd be more like a subdivision, you know, like new development of larger scale, so I think that's a fair observation. The other thing we could do is just, as staff, follow up with our public works department and ask about maintenance opportunities, and see what can be done as far as like a dust control.
Any other questions?
What is the cost of fixing the problem by actually paving it? Do we have any estimate of how much it would cost, I mean, because I guess what you're saying is, we now have sort of a cul-de-sac here, that cul-de-sac is actually now being turned into a high-traffic U-turn, and I'm assuming that we aren't usually in high-traffic areas, it's going to leave gravel. How does that work?
I would, I would assume that they would, you know, the kind of material I'm thinking of would be more like asphalt, I don't think that this would be a full-on urban cross-section if you were to be asking the applicant to make this improvement, but we couldn't provide you cost estimates, as planning staff, we were, you know, we circulate this amongst engineering and public works, and we count on them to provide us feedback, we didn't spend time doing an analysis on, you know, pavement or cost.
Well?
So, in other words, if we voted to approve the staff recommendation with a proviso that that were done, that would be appropriate at this time, would it not?
It's in your purview.
Sorry, I would make it, if you wanted to do that, I'd make it subject to city engineer's approval of the material design. Just something as simple as provision of a hard road surface to the satisfaction of the city engineer.
Okay, well?
I would make that motion then, Madam Chair.
Can I make a question before that, because doesn't Greg, do you have a concern with precedent in that situation, or how does that work with your concern, what you're saying?
Are we in board discussion now?
Well, we will close the public hearing, if you have no further questions for staff. And now we're in discussion.
Yeah, I guess from...
Old applicant rebuttal, I'm sorry.
Yeah, we missed the whole thing.
Why don't we have the applicant can come forward and answer, respond to any of the concerns that were raised?
The, early in the process of the design, we looked at that, and we talked about that being a public street, and that it was gravel, or it isn't even gravel, it's just dirt, and that is a public street, so we can't do anything about it. It is somewhat of the early on design issues is that the current parking lot that we have is hard surface, it does have an entrance onto hard surface, the, meeting the current zoning requirements of the setback in the north lot line, we are required to tear out some of, we're replacing all of the concrete, and we're not allowed to get the 60-foot I need for a two-way street, so that's why we have a one-way in, one-way out. That does place us on the dirt, as the person was saying. It's already a great deal of expense to put in an all-new, new parking lot, we lose cars, it is functioning well the way it is, but meet current zoning requirements, that's why we're doing it. The, the other item is, the cost to do that would be huge. The other item is the cost to do that would be huge. And I would think it would end up being spread out over several of the neighbors, which they'll all object. That would be a question for staff in terms of how they take street improvements over each of the landowners.
A quick question for you, sir. When you looked at the layout, did you evaluate if a head-in configuration where you could get by with just one drive and what that might do to the number of stalls?
It would, if we did 90-degree parking and left it the way it is at, it works just fine. It works every day now. The, what would happen is instead of a 24-foot drive or a 20-foot drive, we would be slightly under that. It's a low volume of traffic, so something like that could work.
Bert, could you go back to the site plan slide? Because I want to see if there's another solution here.
This is the landscape plan, but it is 19 feet, 20 feet, 19 feet type of situation. Then the areas, I can't see me pointing at it. If this, what we're making up for is five feet here that we had to take out to meet zoning ordinance. We could make this come in and be 90-degree at, you know, both sides so they pull in, back out and go. We won't meet the parking requirement of the driveline being 24 feet.
And that's, we can offer relief of that too. So, and some of that can be approved by staff and actually some of, any of it could be waived by the, this body. So if there is a way to reduce the drive aisle width and, you know, if we're just talking about a couple of feet here or there, the solution to the concern might be just to go as it is today, which is fed off of one driveway with head-end parking. I know you've worked hard to try to hit that drive aisle width, but do you know what it would take?
We can't make it fit under typical 90-degree parking.
I know, but what kind of drive aisle would you need? You said, I mean, 24 is the normal, but can you do with 20? What, you have a five-foot, you said you have a five-foot setback from the north?
Yes.
What if that was four? I mean, I'm just trying to-
Well, we had to take out parking to get the five-foot setback. So that's, the biggest obstacle would be the trash receptacle guy pulling in and having to back out.
Yes.
If there's not full of cars, you can get turned around. It is something that if it was approved, keep just one drive, I could work with staff to allow for like a 20-foot parking driveway.
Madam Chair, is it possible, I think what I'm kind of hearing, instead of trying to redesign this all here tonight, I mean, if the applicant's willing to sort of take this back and work with staff, I think there's some flavor here maybe. I don't know about the rest of the board, but to get back to a single in-and-out because the city has not completed the road and see what things can be adjusted and edited and waived at staff level.
And the commission could actually just move the staff recommendation, which is approval, and we really focused on those two type twos, which tonight's discussion isn't anything to do, I mean, we're-
Sorry.
That's okay. So, you know, really tonight, they're here to get waiver of the utilities and the screening. So you guys could move the staff recommendation. We can work with them on these other things. Shaving off a few feet of the, of things here and there are not gonna take a type two. So if you want to just move the staff recommendation, you could even make comment that you'd like staff to work with applicant to get it down to one driveway. We can work with them.
Can I ask one follow-up question? Is one of the other issues, parking lot, is it parking ratio? Is there a parking ratio minimum that's required of this thing here that we're trying to fit?
There are parking standards and ratios, but they are all eligible for staff consideration through a type one design alternative. I don't believe that they're at any, you know, issue, I don't believe we've already issued any type ones on this, but we would look at that. I mean, the new code was set up to be flexible so we could deal effectively with these, you know, historic areas, the infill development, try to have reasonable responses to them. So I am not aware of there being a particular issue here.
The parking count that we have, we made it to the minimum of 40% by using on-street parallel parking next to parking lots.
Yeah, I mean, there, we don't need relief or action from the commission tonight on the parking. Certainly, we can work with the applicant. If we get down to one driveway, that's at least, you know, that's potentially another stall. I think there's an opportunity here to move forward.
Thank you. Are there any other questions for staff before we close the public hearing?
Okay, I have one last stupid question. I'm sorry. On the utilities, I'm not opposed to burying utilities. I guess I am opposed to people paying extra for them or us waiving them without any recourse. Is there anything that's been considered of looking at putting an amount that makes sense on a larger project in escrow or something like that? Is that something is possible or how does that actually work? And I'm not saying that we change what's going here, because I know work has been put in here, as long as we're not dumping a whole lot of extra traffic onto dirt. That doesn't seem very good of us. But I am curious on the undergrounding issue. It doesn't seem like setting a precedent where we keep either asking for a really expensive job or just waiving future consideration. That seems problematic.
You know, Glenn is the escrow expert, so that's why I was like pointing at her and she's rolling her eyes at me. But I do think we have had, correct me if I'm wrong, but up in Sherman Hill, we did do an escrow agreement, but was that not escrow? Go ahead. See, that's why you should answer the question.
We've done at least one or two for undergrounding. The code actually, this is a little bit off-topic, but the code now is set up for sidewalks, as Jason was saying, to allow for escrow agreements in certain sidewalk types, priority streets. So, so we do have that structure that we can rely on. That's something that for utilities, the commission would have to suggest and recommend at this point because that's not codified now as to utilities. But we could do that and I think Jason's right. We've done that at least once, if not twice, for undergrounding of utilities. I think we had about a 10-year window on the escrow agreement. The money came in upfront. It was, the agreement was approved by city council and the developer, property owner has to get the utilities undergrounded or the city can use that money to do it themselves within that window, the escrow, of the escrow term.
How do we start looking into codifying that option supposed to on-off? Because that seems far more fair.
Well, go ahead.
Well, I think the other part we have to recognize though is the limited time span of the escrow agreements, that they're not an end-all solution because they, they're relying, as Glenn has said, on the city to come back with their master project. And so in the, in utility burial, the city hasn't typically done that. You know, it's usually development, when development happens, they deal with the utilities. You know, where the sidewalk program is a little bit different in the sense that we have an established CIP, you know, budget item. We're building sidewalks, trying to fill the gaps. So we have a mechanism in place that we'll go out and build it. So we think there's a, there's a reasonable expectation that we'll build a, pull the money out of escrow and use it, where with the utility part, at this point, we don't really have a structure to execute it. And streetscape projects potentially, but this would be an area, you know, the streetscape project here is on Ingersoll side. We're not gonna do that on Linden.
Chair?
Yeah.
We've closed the public hearing, correct?
We can now.
Okay.
Okay. If there are no further questions, we'll close the public hearing.
Okay. I would move staff with the stipulation that Jason recommended about the paving or working with-
We'll work with that, I guess, to see if we can get it out.
Okay, any further discussion in the motion? If not, all those in favor, raise your right hand. Nana's vote, so thank you. We're now ready for item number 10. Request from Goodrich Des Moines for a plan on Hubble Avenue self-storage for a type-two design alternative for property at 2590 Hubble Avenue to allow loading entrances on the primary facade of the proposed storefront-type building, which is only allowed on any non-primary street or rear facade. Bert?
Yes. Madam Chair, members of the commission, Bert Ross, planning staff for the City of Des Moines. On this item, we do have a member in the audience who is hearing impaired, so I would ask that everybody be extra cautious and speak clearly into the microphones for her sake. Item number 10 is a request for a public hearing site plan for a new self-storage facility that is being converted or being constructed within the former Gordmans Department Store at 2590 Hubble Avenue. The question before you tonight is only regarding whether or not to allow two overhead garage doors on the primary facade, not the specific use. Back in March, the Board of Adjustment had granted the conditional use that allowed use of the building or use of the property for this use and that the 30-day appeal period of that determination or that decision of the board has already passed. So the use has already been approved really tonight. The only question before you is regarding the site plan and whether or not it's appropriate to allow two overhead doors to be on the primary facade of the structure. So as I mentioned, the subject property is the former Gordmans Department Store on the west side of Hubble Avenue. It's just across Hubble from the teach-out pool and from the east side library. Just to the south is the, where's it, the Nahas Pool? Anyway, the property is just across from the former Kmart, which is also recently converted to over, in terms of self-storage. We had a photo submitted of that property there at Kmart that does show it has what appears to be overhead doors on the front facade, so I just wanted to share that with you quickly. But again, the site is located here, just outside of the flood plain. You can see this blue line is the zoning boundary. The site's primarily zoned MX3, but there is some flood district immediately to the north and to the east. So here are some site photos. This is the existing primary facade facing east. This is the north facade and then this is the rear facade. So as part of their site plan, they have proposed two overhead doors on that east facade. It's best denoted here. This is that east building elevation. You can see the two overhead doors here are, design ordinance, urban design ordinance requires any overhead doors for self-storage in the MX3 district to be located on a side or rear facade. So in this instance, if you remember from the aerial, the east, I'm sorry, the west property line actually fronts a street, so their only option is to put doors on the north-facing wall of the building. And so staff has recommended denial of that design alternative because we feel that it is reasonably practicable to require them to shift those two doors from the east facade to the north facade. As I mentioned, staff has recommended denial of the requested type-two design alternative, but approval of the public hearing site plan. And we did not receive any comments or comment cards from the neighbors, but I do know there is a woman in the audience who wants to speak in opposition to this tonight. Any questions for me?
Go ahead.
Yeah, one. Was noise pollution of trucks backing up and beeping right along the back of those houses raised as an issue of concern if the doors go to the north?
We didn't take that into account. We really just took into account the aesthetics of the-
I think, if I could interject, Bert, because I have a little more background. The, our consideration, their appeal was focused on the backside, which is the west side, which is close proximity to the houses, so I don't know if you go back to the aerial. So we're supportive of that. We don't, we think it's a good idea not to have the overhead doors back there, it's close proximity to those houses. But the inside is being completely renovated and so our sense was that we hadn't seen argument or evidence of why the doors couldn't be on the north and, you know, they could be middle to the east and away from the residents to the west. I do recognize what you're saying, that if they're on the front, that that would be further away, but from our perspective, we were looking for more dialogue at the meeting and just kind of see what the commission thought, see what the applicant had to say. I think that's a great observation, but that wasn't, you know, I think the more dialogue was what we were looking for.
Any other questions for Bert? If not, we're ready to hear from the applicant. Please come forward, state your name and address and sign in, please.
Good evening. I'm Bob Gibson with Civil Design Advantage, 3405 Southeast Crossroads Drive in Grimes, representing the ownership group. I'll start out by, when this opened up, the item was saying that this is owned by, I'm sorry, and that's without the mask. Goodrich is no longer the owner of this property. I just wanted to clarify that. They were when this process started back in February or March, but the new ownership, which is 2590 Investors, they have closed on the project. So I just wanted to clarify that. I don't know if it's that critical, but just wanted to let you guys know. The way I see this whole issue with the doors is the ordinance, I think, looks, is looking at aesthetics and functionality, but I think maybe aesthetics is a really big one in terms of the ordinance. There's a couple of things I want to point out to you. Like I said, it seems like the intent of this regulation is for buildings that are nearer the street frontage. And if you look at that little sketch that's in ordinance, it shows a building that is right up against the streets. And for better or for worse, I brought this. I should've brought a smaller one that I could've popped on there, but it's shown here, the street frontage right there and right there in a building, right there at the corner. And I understand, oh, you've got that, Bert?
Yeah, we're building that.
Yeah, thanks.
The lights will kick back on with motion.
Yeah, as you can see, the intent and what they're showing as an illustration to which all those requirements apply is a building that's sitting there at the corner and it's got frontage really close to the street. And all of those requirements make a ton of sense in that situation. In an existing situation like we have, we've got this building that is 400 feet back at the closest, and where those doors are designed right now are the closest, it's at an angle from Hubble, and the closest those doors are is 400- from Hubble, and the closest those doors are is 442 feet back. It's farther than a football field back from the right away. And I wanted to point out, we've got this illustration here. And that view is from the drive coming in. Those are the two doors, and you can see that they're just kind of blend in with the whole facade of the building with the, with the colors and the panels and everything. And we've got the architect here that can address some of the issues of why that's the best place, and also Mark Campbell here with the ownership group, who's going to talk about the operational and the life safety issues as to why it's not a good idea to put it onto the north side. But anyway, I wanted to point out the aesthetics of this. Those doors are going to be so far back, they're going to look just like the front of the building, so aesthetically, I don't, I don't see it as an issue. Functionally, these are not semi-loading places, these are storage units, so you're not going to have the large trucks and a lot of traffic. It's intermittent traffic in these kind of uses, and so, there's not going to be a constant busy loading back, you know, loading off of big trucks like you would at the back of a grocery store or something like that. And addition to the just, the limited traffic involved there, again, it's set so far back from the street that the, any activity there isn't going to interfere or hardly be noticed from Hubble. So, I just wanted to point that out, and I think from my perspective, that's, that's what I've got, and I'd like to give Mark the time to come up and explain some of the operational and life safety issues.
Thank you.
Can you put the site plan back up? Thanks.
Yeah, thank you very much. My name is Mark Campbell. Our office is in Denver, Colorado, 7979 East Tufts Avenue in Denver. I'm the manager of the entity that owns this, 2590 Investors. We bought it in May of this year. I just arrived, and thank you for letting us speak here today. I guess it really comes down to east side or north side versus the east side in the front. From our point of view, from an operational standpoint, the north side, it just is, comes down to, in our view, a life safety issue and being a good neighbor to our residential neighbors on one side or the other. Residence is on the backside, which you've already determined doesn't work, and on the north side, it appears we're about 150 feet from a large senior housing community. Furthermore, as you can see, there's an access drive that is used quite often. We own a little, what used to be a residential lot here on the north side, and people do buzz through there sometimes too fast. Our construction manager's saying this, our guy, the other day, going 50 miles an hour through there, so that's a bit of a problem. And if we go on that north side, which has really for a long time been the ignored side of this property, when we took it over, that's where there was lots of trash buildup, dumping of all kinds of things, and we've cleaned that up substantially. Furthermore, we're concerned about ice buildup, and we're very concerned about slipping falls. You're going to get ice on all sides, but on the north side, as you know, it's going to be the worst side. It's going to be harder to maintain that. Furthermore, our office will be located in the middle of the front side of the building, adjacent to our proposed garage door location. We're, we're building these garages interior because of the weather here. I mean, even in summer, as you know, it gets warm, so we're getting people out of the elements, again, for safety and comfort. And north side is not adjacent, not close to our office. We have people driving moving trucks that are not professional drivers, and they really, from a safety standpoint and just operationally, need to be close to our office if possible. Another, while convenience but also safety issue is if we try to load from the north side and they're going to the south side, it's a very long walk, and they're pulling, pushing, carrying large, heavy items potentially. That's why we want to load from the middle of the building, so we reduce the walking distance by half. So, from an operational standpoint, much better. I think it's much safer, and if we face, we're 450 feet approximately from Hubble Avenue, and really, those are commercial uses out there. On the north side, we're 150 feet from residential uses, which we really do not want to disturb. The last thing I'll say is Cube Smart has been selected to manage this property. They're a large real estate investment trust, probably third largest in the United States in terms of management. You're probably aware of them, they're here in town. The gentleman we worked with was on a flight, but here's what he had to say. Self-storage is a very low transaction business with an average of one new rental per day. Self-storage customers then frequently access to storage units, but it's important that the primary entry points are in a safe, well-lit, secure area and not hidden behind to the side of the building. It's ideal for the entry area to be close to the rental office, which is staffed seven days a week, so that is important. We have either one or two managers on site seven days a week. Now, I will tell you, I'm here for questions if need be. I have a pretty severe hearing impairment, so if you have something, Bob will interpret or he'll answer it for us. Thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you. Any questions? Will?
I have a question about the accessible parking stalls that are located adjacent to the building that appear to be just north of the loading doors. What's the kind of safe pathway for those customers to get from those stalls to the office doors? It looks like they have to cross in front of the loading doors to get there. Is that correct?
Bert, is that the only site plan drawing we have? Well, it's not showing up much better here. Actually, there are a number, there's four different accessible stalls here. There's two right here, and there's two over here. And in all cases, there's, the gradients are well within ADA requirements. Along this area here, there is, there's a curb along here, there's actually a ramp right in here which will serve these guys. This one, the sidewalk that's right in front of the building slopes down to become flush with the pavement right here, so that's how these stalls would access there. And yes, the travel would, would cross the garage doors, but I mean, they're there to get into the crutches, so, and I think you have to admit that these, these stalls, their use would be extremely limited in this situation because you're here, you're here to move and haul stuff, and so, they're probably, the vast majority of people with accessibility issues are going to be driving their vehicle internally to get to their units or to load to their units, so bringing their cars in here. In a situation like this, the required stalls, which we have here, is really kind of overkill. They'll never have that many people parking there, probably, never more than 10 at a time or something. Yeah.
The only thing, I think this is germane to the point, is that our garage doors will be automatic, but they also have safety arms for two reasons. One reason is, is people are coming up, when they see the garage door going up, sometimes they just pull forward if there's, if there's not a safety arm, and so, they are going to be required to stop, and same on the way out. So, we're doing it because they usually just run right through the doors that are coming down, and it's a problem. But I think that will have the impact of stopping people, they'll be at full stop, and so, I think it'll be slightly more safe.
If I can, I'd like to add another comment regarding safety issues. One of the issues about having access here is this area is really not visible from Hubble at all or, or from 25th over here. It's really kind of hidden. It's, it's hidden by the senior living complex here as well as some, a lot of the existing trees there. So, that's a concern too, of the, where this, people come in and out or, you know, after hours particularly, that there's much greater visibility from Hubble. And having said that, again, it's still 450 feet away from Hubble right away, but it can be seen from a safety standpoint.
Will?
Contradict me if I'm wrong, but my question has to do a little bit with the previous question on the, on the elevation, on the elevation drawing, the east elevation drawing. Will the pedestrian doors there to the south of the overhead doors remain functional?
Right, right here?
Sorry?
Right here?
Yes.
Yes. Will those doors remain functional, is it?
Yes, that's the front door to the.
To the offices.
So, our office is immediately contiguous to the garages. Like we said, that's an operational, it's better for the customer, safer. If they need help, we're right there next to them.
Yeah, thank you.
Any other questions? If not, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any speakers in opposition to this request? If none? Was there somebody who wished to speak against the request this evening? Please come forward.
Ma'am?
Valerie.
Valerie?
Valerie?
Okay, I'm sorry, I'm Valerie Madison, and I'm the one who's hearing impaired, so don't ask me questions. I just came here on behalf of my neighbors. We don't want another ugly orange storage bin. There's one right around the corner on Guthrie and the freeway, I think you know that, the U-Haul that is where Kmart used to be, it's just like, I had a person here a year and a half ago from California working on a political campaign, and I was describing where to go someplace on the east side, and she was just stunned at how we are treated over here with the, over here, whatever, over there, with the idea of all the warehouses and everything. You drive through a nice neighborhood, and then all of a sudden, there's a great big warehouse. Take that into consideration. I can count on two hands, two hands, yes, two hands, just people I talked to within the immediate neighborhood the last day or two that would like to see a grocery store. Now, that was just me calling a few of my friends. They said, we won't mention Hy-Vee, but how they have a monopoly, okay? We don't like Cash Saver. I went to Cash Saver, they have old food, so, I mean, a grocery store would be really nice there. As the gentleman pointed out, you have the living facilities, Village Valley View? Yeah, Valley View over there. I have people tell me they go to Agony, Altoona, or Pleasant Hill. Now, we shouldn't live in Des Moines and have to go to other towns to go to the grocery store. A grocery store would be very, very helpful there. That's mainly my main argument. Don't ask me questions. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you, Valerie. Any other person in the audience that would like to speak in opposition to the request? If not, the applicant can have a rebuttal to the most recent speaker.
Sorry, they had to tell me. I heard, I heard most of what you're saying, and I can appreciate wanting retail. I was a retail developer for 25 years in Denver, Texas, all over the place, mostly grocery anchored stores, Kroger, Safeway, Albertsons, a couple Walarts. Last year, like 13,000 stores closed nationally, individual stores. This is one case and example. Gordmans' parent company, Stage Inc., went bankrupt and closed every, and liquidated every store. You probably read the paper, it's over and over and over. I mean, people getting their groceries delivered, everything delivered by Amazon, UPS, whatever else. So, if there was a grocery, grocery store demand, we would have rather done that, but there isn't a grocery store that wants to be here in this location. And the prior owner, the broker for them is a retail broker, David Wolfe. He's not here right now. I've met with him, talked to him many times. That's what he does, he leases retail spaces, and they couldn't lease it for months. I mean, they knew the store was going out, so he had an opportunity to try to pre-lease it for like a year, and it wasn't, it wasn't possible. So, while we wish that would, we could have done that, it's just, it's just not available in today's marketplace. So, we switched as a company, we don't even do retail anymore because it's really in a tailspin as an entire segment of the commercial real estate business. So, we don't do office buildings, they're difficult, particularly post-COVID, people working from home. So, we switched to storage five, six years ago, we've done 12 of them. We feel like we know what we're doing, and in terms of, there is some other storage units nearby, but we have various software, one's called Radius Software, strictly for storage. It tells us, and everything about the demographics we need to know, tells us how many people, where they went to school, I mean, everything, their income, and also, how many square feet there is per capita, including the new U-Haul. So, it meets our metrics, I think it meets the national metrics, so I think it's a good site for that. So, thank you.
Thank you.
I want to add one other comment. One of my neighbors, before I left home tonight, by the way, I'm missing the Olympics, she says, "You're not going to win." And that's sad, okay? That's very, very sad, and she's, I'm the kid in the neighborhood. And I says, "You know what? We fought one of the nursing homes over there before. They wanted to take all the rest of one street that they're on and our street. We fought them, we won." I said, "You have to stand up for your rights." That's all I'm saying, okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, at this time, if there are no questions for staff, we'll close the public hearing.
Chair?
Yeah.
Well, am I correct in thinking that we don't have any influence over what someone does on the property? Is that correct?
Yeah, the issue tonight is not a use issue, it's the site plan.
Yeah, so I just wanted to make that clear, that we cannot influence what goes in that property. Correct?
Correct. Will?
When the staff was talking, they, they talked about the aesthetics of the property, and no one has mentioned that yet, and I'd like to, to address that for a minute or two. You know, we're looking at the east facade of a, basically a big box store, okay? And it has, in terms of, it has a couple of characteristics. One, of course, is the horizontal length, but the other thing is the very high parapet, okay? And that's the thing that immediately catches your attention, that's a commercial welcome, and that, that's its point. And we could talk about perhaps, you know, a bit on the north and that kind of thing. Personally, if I had a storage here, I wouldn't want to have to enter on the north during a blizzard, snow and ice here in Des Moines, but, you know, that's another question. But what I'm saying is, this is a welcoming feature of the building. You drive in and you know where to go because the building is telling you where to go, right? And I think it would be a disservice to the commercial function of the building to say, you know, "You're welcome, but, you know, go around the corner." So, I think that the notion of these two doors that are actually in the place where entrances were originally. were originally, it's a good repurpose of that space.
Thank you. Any other comments? I'd say I support what Will's comments just made, and also, safety issues that were brought I would, I'd like to see the entrance on the east side myself. Anybody wish to make a motion at this time? Speak in, yeah, speak into your mic, Will.
I'll move acceptance of the request to design to design alternative.
And approval over the public hearing site plan.
Yes, exactly. Thank you, Jason.
So Will has made a motion, is there any further discussion? If not, all those in favor of Will's motion, raise your right hand. Okay, thank you, that passed, so thank you. Now we're ready for the final item, item number 11.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I need to recuse on this item.
Okay, thank you. Okay, item 11 is a request from Walnut Creek Community Church for a public hearing site plan, Walnut Creek Church South, for a type 2 design alternative for property at 3516 Southeast 14th Street to allow development of a civic-type building in a P2 public, civic, and institutional district for assembly place of worship use.
Madam Chair, members of the Commission, Bert Ross, planning staff for the City of Des Moines, another site plan before you tonight. This site plan is requesting two design alternatives. The site is located on the west side of Southeast 14th Street. It's an existing religious assembly use that is being renovated, and they're doing site improvements that are triggering the need for them to come into compliance with our current standards. The two design alternatives that they are requesting tonight are, one, for waiver of the requirement that they put a pedestrian or primary entrance on the primary facade facing Southeast 14th Street. And the second is to allow for a parking lot within the side yard where parking is required to be behind the building. So, as I mentioned, it's an existing church on the east, I'm sorry, west side of Southeast 14th Street, just south of Indianowa Avenue. Here is the site plan that they are proposing. You can see they're doing an addition onto the east facade that would eliminate the existing primary entrance facing Southeast 14th Street. Here's zoomed in on the site plan. And you can see that they're adding that addition here and then expanding the parking lot. Here is, they're building elevations that show the, this here is the east facade facing Southeast 14th Street, which is the primary facade, and they're required to provide at least one pedestrian entrance on that facade. So, staff has recommended denial of that design alternative. We feel that there's ways the church could be designed to allow for some sort of entrance or entry feature on that east facade. However, we have recommended approval of the design alternative to allow the parking to remain in the side yard. We do feel that there's a practical difficulty there for them to move the parking lot, so it's entirely behind the building. We didn't feel that would be reasonable, so we are supportive of that design alternative. But here's the consent map, we did not receive any comment cards in support or in opposition. So, that concludes my presentation. Did anybody have any questions for me?
Guess we have no questions, Bert. Thank you. Is the applicant present to speak? Please state your name and address and sign in.
My name's John Schreiner, 3516 Southeast 14th Street. All right, I'm the, one of the pastors of Walnut Creek, and give it to my architect here in a second, but we, we got this building two weeks before COVID, so it was very timely, because we were meeting in a school prior to that. So pretty thankful for the space, but it's very limiting with in-between services to try to get people in and out of the building, and so we're looking to put a little atrium in to meet in-between. And, yeah, we're excited, we have 175 people, and so we're thrilled to get a little bigger, make a little space, and be able to spread out, especially with all that uncertainty of COVID, and give people room to, to meet each week. So, I started doing, but I'll give it to Josh, architect, to tell a little more about.
Thank you.
Yeah, like John said, I'm Josh Williams, I'm a slingshot architecture. Yeah, we, we're really excited to engage with the church on kind of helping them expand this smaller church building that's really set back on the site quite, quite a long distance. You know, I think I probably have driven past that building, you know, 20, 30 times, and never noticed it until, until I got the call. So, yeah, we're, we're excited to, to look at how can we increase the presence and let people know that this church is, it's, it's new, they finally have a location. It's a very difficult site to kind of work with. I don't think we have a grading plan in here, but I've got up there. So, that site, or the, the site image that was one of the first images you looked at, it's about nine to 10 feet from the public sidewalk up to the, the building right now. And it's set back about 150 feet, even with the new addition. So it's just really far back there. It's not very walkable, and so we, we've tried to, you know, solve that by adding an accessible sidewalk, and you can just see the circuitous kind of pattern that you have to do to, to really climb that site in a way that, that is accessible. Bus stations, or bus stops are somewhat far away as well, kind of building corner, at intersection corners. And so really, this site is predominantly vehicular approach to the building. You know, if, if we were designing this building fresh, you know, we might do it a lot closer to the, to the public way, and, you know, hopefully encourage that walkability, but really, we, we kind of had to think about the walkability of the current parking lot and just where it made sense to push the parking lots to the rear end of the site versus bringing it forward. And so we, we just felt like putting the entrance on that side just made a lot of sense for the most users that will be using the building. And, yeah, the grade change is another big thing that's working against us. As you can see, the, the site slopes away from the current building, so it makes installing ramps and stairs just really difficult, because it's really working against you. And so by putting it on the west, we're really able to minimize how much ramp and how much stairs for users that they already have to climb up quite a bit. Yeah, and I think the other thing is just keeping, you know, it's kind of an object building with where it is on the site, you know, and so by, by installing ramps and stairs, you know, it could just look complex and, you know, not, not really user-friendly when it's on the backside of where the most people will be approaching from. Yeah, and any questions on the primary entrance?
Yes, ma'am.
I'll have Ryan to, to talk on the second item.
You could go ahead and sign in after, if you want to just approach to the mic.
Good evening, Reinharstie 3405 Southeast Crossroads Drive, Grimes, Iowa. I'm the civil engineer on the project. We are in agreement with staff's recommendation to approve the, the parking within the side yard in the site. So, you know, as you've seen with some of the exhibits in the staff report, existing parking is in the side yard, the existing parking, it's about 28,000 square feet, so, you know, to move and replace that parking, it's a $200,000 cost item. As Josh stated, you know, this is in site grades, it's pretty flat on the, on the top of the hill to the south of that building. Relocating that around to the rear yard, it would, it would cause quite a bit of additional hard work to do that work. And then the pedestrian route to that building entrance would be quite a lot greater distance. So, we agree with staff that we should be, or granted a type 2 design alternative for this proposed parking. We'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
There are no questions? Do we have any additional speakers in support? Do we have anyone in the audience that wishes to speak in opposition? No. Okay, do we have any questions for staff at this time?
Just one clarification. Is staff, if a door is being put on the east side, which is what currently exists at that building right now, if a door is put on the east side, is there a requirement for ramps to go up it, or is a door with steps fine on that side?
Well, they might be able to find multiple, another route that's compliant with ADA, I don't know if it would have to be a ramp.
I forgot to turn on my mic. They maybe all have multiple routes and not have every route be an ADA, accessible route. I defer to their architect to talk about that a little bit. But what I wanted, I, I do want to emphasize, you know, with this project, you know, we were looking for some dialogue here at the meeting to try to understand the design intent, understand obstacles to having a door face the, the street, and so that's what we were, we were looking for. So I'll leave it to you to decide as a group if you've felt like you've heard explanation enough or have more questions, but that was really, as staff, what we were looking for.
There are no further questions for staff? We'll close the public hearing. Abby?
I guess my only comment is if we, oh, sorry.
Sorry. I was just going to say I appreciate the sidewalk that goes from the street to the church. I think that's a great addition, and I guess I'm not convinced that there needs to be an entrance on the east side. I don't think that it would be something that would be frequently used. Yeah.
Thank you, Abby. Go ahead.
I guess I'm sort of of the counter a bit, which is if there is, I mean, it's even a church, which is supposed to be going towards opening to the community, the community goes across that sidewalk, we're adding a sidewalk. I don't see why you need to have extra ramps up there. You're talking about a door with steps that opens on to hopefully a lawn with a lot of families playing in the lawn. Because I, I don't see the point in going against staff recommendation in this case.
Any other discussions or motion at this time?
I, if I could, I would, if you, if you go to the elevation or even the, the rendering of the, the east side of the church with the addition they're putting on, the, if the intent of the zoning ordinance and that is to create a, a front that has some energy, some activity, some, just activating that elevation, they've done a nice job of doing that with a very large window that is bringing the inside activity outside to the street. This building is set very far back, the cars are not going slow, very few people are walking in front of this. And putting the entrance where the cars are located, where the majority of the people are going to be arriving at this place, there are many, many precedents, old and new, in church design that are a precedent for that. Again, the large window facing east to a very busy street and a very large front lawn is above and beyond, is, is a nice gesture. And just being able to see that activity is something not many churches do. They, they sink these activity halls into the ground, hide that activity, and, and these, these guys are showcasing it. I think that's a good gesture.
Thank you. Any other comments? Someone like to put forward a motion at this time?
I'd support a motion that gets to the heart of what Abby and Todd were saying. I don't know exactly how to word it.
I think it would just be approval of the type 1, or type, excuse me, type 2 design alternative in public hearing site plan.
Yes, I would like to make that motion.
Okay. Any further discussion? If not, motions before us, all those in favor, raise your right hand. And motion passes, so thank you, that's our.
Did you get it?
Was there a vote for opposition or abstention?
Oh, excuse me, all those not in favor of the motion, I'm sorry. Adjusting to not asking for Tyler to always take the vote.
Yeah. Yes, they voted for. And Greg abstained.
And one abstention.
Greg abstained.
Okay, are there any city reports at this time?
No, other than I appreciate everybody muddling through this with us, we haven't been together for well over a year, done a public hearing in person, so I know it's, for me, it's, and staff, it's been nerve-wracking. But I will say, I did get a request from Jan that after the meeting closes, there's a lot of new faces, so people could just hang out and introduce themselves. We don't need to do that during the meeting. That's all.
Jason, I, I would like to, who went off? I don't even know who went off.
Well, Greg Jones.
Okay.
And I think we had a vacancy was another position that was filled, just a, a long-term vacancy, and I don't remember the position off the top of my head, but as far as recent people leaving, Greg Jones is no longer on the commission. Yes, thank you.
So if there's no other business before us?
I have a question.
Hey, Jason, some while ago, I asked a question with all the staff reorganization and so forth, if staff would develop a flow chart or an organizational chart, and what's the status of that?
I have one, it was even, I have one that I can email to you that I, I did get ahold of, but I just didn't get around to getting it sent to you.
Would you do that, please?
Sure.
And my other comment is this, this is the first time we've, we've had an in-person for, what, a year and a half, and I am in awe and salute, quite frankly, staff for getting this to go month after month after month in just heroic ways. Congratulations and thanks a lot.
Thank you, thank you. You know, we, we got really comfortable and used to do it in Zoom. It was really scary at first. It, it's almost the reverse, you know, to do this in person now, it's like, what do we do? How do we vote? How do we do?
Yeah. I have, Jason, I have a question. I don't know if I need this. I don't know if I need this on. If it's green, it's on.
Do we want to adjourn the meeting and, is it, is it a business question or just like a general question for me? Okay. Okay, then, then ask, please, during the meeting. There, well, the large package of amendments that were adopted not too long ago actually included the, the ability for staff now to do a type-one if it's a priority two or three route, and then if it's a priority one route, there's the, an escrow agreement possibility. So, we did change, you know, we offered more flexibility so you guys will see less of those coming before you, but also if it is a priority route where we think the city's likely to build within a, you know, 20-year timeframe or something along those lines, then yes, we will do the escrow because, you know, those timeframes work together. So, a person can choose to pay into escrow. That's kind of where we ended.
Okay.
All right, thanks.
And thanks for bearing with me because I kept waiting for Tyler to take the vote, and at least I didn't say, "Raise your hand or press star nine tonight," after I finally learned it. So, thank you. Meeting adjourned.